Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Wednesday, October 28th, 2020 meeting of the Chapewa Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing matters of health and safety, the employment history of particular person, potential litigation, and to receive advice from council. May I have a motion and a second to reconvene the public session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so good evening everyone. So tonight we are going to continue the discussion of the town's proposed form-based code. I'll have a few words to say about that and then we will hear from the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Lisa. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Holly McCall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, thank you Holly and thank you Lisa for the reminder. Okay, so tonight we'll be discussing the town's proposed form-based code. We have a consultant here to present for us, but before we do that, I have a few words to say. So, I just want to stress to everyone that Chapewa School District is committed to welcoming and educating all children of the district, whether they live in a single-family home, a condo, or a rental. We don't divide or view our students through these lenses. And we understand the need to revitalize the downtown hamlet. We hope to work in partnership with the town and our community to achieve this goal in a way that reflects a true mandate from our citizens. So the question before the school district at this time is not whether the form-based code is desirable or not, and it's not about us telling the town how many students the school district can absorb. We will absorb all students, no matter how many, that come into the district and we will welcome the opportunity to educate them. The issue is whether there is adequate information in the DTEIS on impacts of the code to the school district, so that the community can make informed decisions on their ability to absorb increased tax rates that will be required to maintain the quality of educational programs they expect, including class size, electives at Greeley, and capital projects we may need to expand our facilities. We believe the DTEIS is defective regarding adequate information of this time and therefore cannot be the basis for informed and meaningful public comments during this public hearing period. We know that most residents are here for our schools. School district taxes represent over 70% of local property taxes. Increased enrollment costs will be borne by current residents of single-family homes taxed at a higher essential rate, which is lower than commercial rates. Enrollment increases would impact staffing, salaries, employee pension, health benefits, transportation, the number of buses and traffic, special education services, facilities and school infrastructure, class size, et cetera. We have sent two letters to the town board requesting an extension of the public comment period until such time as we can obtain accurate data. One letter was sent on October 15th, to which we received a response that made arguments unrelated to our question and declined to answer our question. This is why we felt compelled to send a second letter on October 26th. Yesterday on October 27th, we received a response advising us that the town board would hold another public hearing on November 10th and could extend the written comment period for 30 days thereafter. We are very glad that the town has moved in this direction and we would like to express our desire to have a collaborative partnership with them to achieve what's in the best interest of our community. And in that spirit of partnership, we would like to reassure the town that we would always respond to them. The town representatives have stated in their letter to us and on social media that the school district did not respond to their attempts to contact us on the form-based code. It's important that we reassure them and everyone that the school district would never ignore their attempts to contact us and that we are always ready and willing to work with them. Also, this unfairty puts our administrators in a negative light. We on the school board see firsthand how hard they work. They are never off the clock. They work 24/7 for us. They work in the evenings, after-work hours, and they work on the weekends. We owe them a debt of gratitude and I think it's only fair that the school board sets the record straight on their behalf. The town board did say that they reached out to us on January 16th and 23rd as an interested party and we did not respond to them. We had nothing in our records to show the correspondence and we did ask for a record. The town sent us a scan of the public notice sent in the mail through the post office. It was a general notice, it was not addressed to anyone. And I must say, I really do wish that they had followed up with an email or phone call after not hearing back, considering how important this was. I'm not sure whether they relied on a piece of paper dropped in a mailbox without a follow-up. This is a small town and we all know each other and we call each other quite easily. During the October 14th meeting, the town representatives referenced another request for information that came in July. And they repeatedly stated that John Chau and Christine Adverman had not supplied information requested by the town in this later correspondence. They said that John had not responded, then they said that he had but had not given the information and couldn't tell us what the information was. And this was all very confusing and we, everyone, ill at ease and we were unable to clarify this on the spot. Since then, we have been able to find out what this was all about. There was one email from the town asking for information sent by Sabrina Charney Hall on July 13th at 10:12 a.m. This was answered by John Chau only two, just two hours at about 12 noon with all the information that we had. There were only four questions that were asked. Most recent school enrollment and projections, information on school capacity, the cost to educate students, and all those questions were answered. The last question that we didn't have were the number of students in the study area. I don't know if this requires files in the office, but in July, the schools were closed due to the COVID health crisis. You may know that John is the central administrator in charge of facilities. I will now take the time here to describe the incredible pressure everyone was under as we worked on school reentry plans and to ensure the safety of our facilities. And this is only one example of the problem of embarking on the biggest project this town has ever seen in the middle of a global pandemic. What we do have is evidence showing that the school district made clear attempts to engage with the town in this process to give our input and to get information. In May, the superintendent made phone calls and on May 7th, our then-board president, Jane Shepherdson, wrote an email to the town supervisor and administrator and the email is part of the public record. And this email said, "Dear Ivy and Jill," et cetera. "Jill, I know you have been in touch with Christine about the form-based code project for downtown Chapewa and the desire for the Board of Education to get a little more information on the current status of the project," et cetera, et cetera. "We feel it would be helpful to learn details about the proposed project that might have an impact on our schools and our school community. Our main areas of focus or impact the project might have on school enrollments and hence our tax base, school and district fields and facilities, and the general health and safety of our school community. Would it be possible to get a brief executive summary or similar type documents so we can see where things are at this point? And as Christine suggested, we think it would be helpful to set up a work session or a brief meeting, whatever is easiest, just so we are up to speed on aspects of the project that the board and the district may need to plan for down the road. Best regards, et cetera." This meeting then took place in June between Jane Christine, the town administrator and planner, where we were told to wait for information that would come out in the DTEIS, which we received on September 29th. Now, I would like to put all of this history behind us and move forward in a positive manner. We appreciate that the town will hold a third public hearing on November 10th and will extend the written comment period for 30 days thereafter. Although this is not exactly the same as extending the public comment period until such time that the school district can obtain accurate and relevant data to show impacts, but we are hopeful that the comment period will be extended for that purpose. Now, there are three other issues that I'd like to put on the table that we haven't discussed yet, but are, one of them especially is extremely important, and one of them is a safety issue. And we really need to consider how significantly increasing the commercial and residential density just a few yards from Bell Middle School would affect student safety. The next issue is an issue of possibly of taxation without representation. The Chapewa Central School District represents residents of Newcastle and Mount Pleasant. I listened to a little bit of the public hearing last night and someone made a comment that the town provides great schools. Now, people don't really think about this, we on the school boards, we're all, we're in the weeds on this, but the town of Newcastle is not the one providing the schools. We're a separate governmental jurisdiction with separate taxing authority. So if the town of Newcastle were to disappear and let's say be absorbed into Mount Pleasant, Mount Kisco, or Pleasantville, or Austin, the CCSD would still exist. So the point is that we represent separate constituents even though they overlap and much of them are the same people. So the town of Mount Pleasant is not represented by the town of Newcastle and we're the only ones who can speak on their behalf on this issue. And so if we see increased taxes that come out of the form-based code voted on by the town of Newcastle, citizens of the town of Mount Pleasant's taxes will be increased. And that is an issue of taxation without representation. I just want to put that out there. And the last and third issue I want to bring up is the Chapewa Central School District Public Library. The building and land are owned by the school district and the library is administered and financed by the Library Board of Trustees and Administration. The library was not listed as an interested party. Although their Board of Trustees are elected officials voted into office by the public, their annual budget is subject to public hearings and is voted on by the public, and taxes are levied on the public to support the library. They will be speaking for themselves on this matter, but it would seem reasonable to have our Public Library Board of Trustees be included in the list of interested parties and there may be a number of issues relevant to them that will require consideration. And I will let them speak to that. So the school board has no agenda other than advocating on behalf of our residents for a process that is inclusive of all voices. And we want to work in partnership with the town to achieve fair and effective representation of our whole community. So at this time, I'll ask if the other school board members have anything that they want to add.
I just want to say thank you for articulating what a lot of us are thinking about really looking forward now to getting our comments together, having kind of feeling a little bit more comfortable and being a good advocate for our constituents.
Well, we need to work out what we have in town, to work with our consultant, to lead a team, understand what impact our district's going to be, and hopefully we can come up with a great solution. What a good vision.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, as others have said, I appreciate the email that we did receive from Ivy Pool, the town supervisor, letting us know that the timeline had been extended and that the town would like to set up a meeting where we can talk through next steps and what we need, which, you know, everybody's articulated is at this point largely time. But we, I look forward to being able to work through the questions and concerns we do have in a collaborative manner and hopefully work through the next steps of this process together.
Yeah, I'll just add that I appreciate everything that's been said and I agree. I think we all feel very committed that we want to move forward in a positive way with a good relationship between us and the town board members and because we really all have the same goal. We want to see the revitalization of downtown, but as you know, our schools are the jewel in the crown here and we're very proud of them and we want to make sure that our kids, no matter what happens, can continue to receive the same education that they're receiving. Okay? Wait for the AV issues, if there's any, we've got some fireworks, but anyway, so we're all in agreement here. I'm looking forward to just, our report tonight from our consultants to make sure that we can provide the town with as much information as possible so that there's no stone left unturned in terms of any impact on schools and how we can work together to make sure that no matter what the development is in the town, that our schools remain as strong as they are. And we'll continue to look out for that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Christine, is there anyone, anything you'd like to say about that? And I will have two other very quick matters on the President.
Okay, so I would just like to say that the school district will continue to respond to the town's request for information and first the town and their consultants to email us what they need to ensure there is an accurate record of their correspondence with us in our response. And we will continue to respond as soon as possible with accurate information to support their planning progress.
Okay, I just have two other, there are two other quick items on the President's report before we get to our consultants. I just want to quickly mention that we've been participating in the New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention. We've attended a law conference, communications conference last week, and this week we saw keynote speakers and heard from the State Education Department interim commissioner Betty Rosa and Board of Regents Vice Chancellor T. Andrew Brown talk about dire issues regarding state funding of schools during the COVID economy and issues of equity. And we've had various seminars, so I just want to keep everyone updated on what the school board has been doing. And we, this is ongoing this week and we can give more detailed update at our next meeting. And also finally, Jane has some uplifting announcements for the sports boosters and CSF.
Yeah, we want to give you all the good stuff. I know it'll be talked about, I'm sure, in the superintendent's report, but I am the board liaison to the Chapewa School Foundation and there will be a couple of Instagrams on the agenda tonight for our approval. There are three of them actually, two of the three are from the street teachers at Greeley and they're in furtherance of the district's commitment to anti-racist teaching and learning. And the third is, involves a steam drum project from a teacher at Bell Middle School and we just wanted to say that we look forward to approving these grants later and implementing them and we really just always appreciate and want to say once again how much we thank the CSF for continuing to support all great programming in our schools. So I wanted to mention that. And in connection with that, I also am the board liaison to the Sports Boosters. And to piggyback on the whole Instagram program, I wanted to mention that the Sports Boosters are introducing it, you can now see it up on their website. It's a little bit of their own Instagram-type program, which we think is a great idea. It's called the Coaches Training and Development Fund. And what this is, it's in essence, an Instagram program of sorts for the benefit of all the Greeley sports teams. The boosters have set up a separate fund for this, so you can actually make a donation to that. And coaches can apply for grants of up to $4,000 to be used for training purposes for their respective teams. It's, you know, to motivate, enhance performance of their teams, and it can be used for anything from skills training, professional development, lectures, equipment, technology, and the like. So there's a link on the boosters page to that and I just wanted to introduce the Coaches Training and Development Fund as a really great initiative by the Sports Boosters. So I wanted to give them a shout-out tonight for creating a great program and we hope it will be very successful.
Thanks, Jane, that's really wonderful. We're so lucky to have organizations like this, like Sports Boosters and CSF. So thank you so much to them and to everyone who's contributed. So I join, to turn it over to Christine now to introduce our consultant.
So, thank you everyone. So as you know, the Board of Education has engaged with two different consultants to help support our work. One was done by Board Resolution and that is with the Chasing Company. I'd like to introduce Chris Brown to the community today and he'll be presenting his analysis to DTEIS. And I also wanted to share that our legal firm, Shaw, Corson, and Lambert, has engaged with a specialized secret attorney to help support our process and that's Allison Soto. She's been making comments during the town board meetings on the district's behalf. So I'd like to, at this time, turn it over to Chris, who will lead the presentation, and Allison will be available to provide follow-up clarity as needed by the Board of Education. So what I thought is that Chris would present and then the board would have an opportunity to engage with Chris and Allison around their questions. And then we could probably transition to a period where we can take public comments regarding this specific item on the agenda and then after the public comment period is concluded, then at the board's direction, Chris and Allison could perhaps respond to some of the comments or questions that we have brought to our board through our processes. Does that sound like a good way to have my board here? Yes, is that what you're asking for?
All right, Chris, turning it over to you.
Sure. Chris Brown, thank you for having me. Just by way of introduction, I am a principal at the Chasing Companies. I lead our planning practice and our practice focuses on environmental impact analysis and community planning.
Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to let you know, and maybe you are, but just make sure that you speak into the microphone.
Real closely.
Yeah, real close to the microphone because we can hear you, but the people watching the video and later might not be able to hear you.
Speaking to the microphone.
Yeah, into the microphone.
That was my, that's my goal.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries. So, the school district asked us to conduct a critical review of the environmental impact statement and that was prepared for the form-based code. And our focus is really on how many school-aged children might be generated as a result of this rezoning. And what we focused on is the build-out scenarios, world projections, the actual estimates provided in the EIS, and then the fiscal impact analysis. Form-based code is a unique zoning technique being used in a lot of urban areas in order to revitalize communities and we're very familiar with that. And just a little bit of background, this is a secret process is what we're focusing on right now. And the town made a decision to do a detailed review of the new zoning regs and in doing so issued a positive declaration, meaning a environmental impact statement would be prepared. That document was published, I think everybody here around the room knows that. There has been a series of public hearings, there was a public hearing last night, or as I mentioned, and where we are is in the public comment period. And so this is why we're here, we're here to help the school district provide comment on that document. Again, some additional background, in the EIS is what they call a build-out analysis. And form-based code really lends itself to conducting a build-out analysis because the form-based code utilizes what they call a regulating plan. So it's a very illustrative plan, where will development go, what might it look like? It does break it out and it looks at commercial, institutional, office, retail, and residential uses. And this figure appears in the EIS and the table that you can't quite read on the top articulates that development potential. A build-out analysis assumes a maximum build-out, if every property with some limitation was built out, how much development could occur. And in the EIS again is this table that provides that estimate. EIS examines existing conditions, how much development currently exists, and then how much would exist after build-out. It does exclude certain partials because they might be the post office or the train station. So there's certain properties that won't be redeveloped by virtue of their current use. And at the end of the day, the estimates that are included there allow for 1,059 apartment units, a mix of one and two-bedroom units, and for a total increase of 977 apartments. And that's the area of concern and we're focused on, how many children might be generated by occupancy of those apartments. Bounce around here just a little bit. The EIS includes an estimate of public school-aged children and this table depicts that, it makes estimates by each individual land use type, including single-family homes, two-family residential units, and most importantly, this mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments. It uses what they call public school children multipliers, and those are published data from a series of sources, and I'm going to talk about those. But the estimate in the EIS assumes or estimates 114 school, public school-aged children would be generated if this project were built out. It indicates that the build-out is projected for over a 15-year period. And I'm going to just talk to you, give you a little bit of background on the multiplier because this is the key issue.
Chris, you got to talk closer to the microphone. Yes.
The public school-aged children multipliers can vary by residential type, tenure, meaning ownership, whether they're rentals or offered for sale, value or rent, price point, bedroom count, geography, and market. Market can vary by, because of its urban location or rural location, or whether it's in an affluent area. So it's important that you select the right multiplier when you do an analysis of this type. There's a variety of sources for multipliers. Source that's included in the EIS is the Rutgers multiplier, Rutgers University and was really the, one of the originators of this environmental impact analysis technique. We note that the Rutgers multipliers are dated, meaning they're derived from 20, excuse me, 2000 census and they're actually published in 2006. But there's other sources and the source that we're going to speak a little bit about tonight is the American Community Survey Public Use Micro Data Sample. Short for that is PUMS. PUMS is available from census sources online and they are available by nature of the public data. This data is available by various census geographies. Census geographies might be, coincide with a county, might coincide with a smaller geographic unit. They don't necessarily coincide with the Chapewa School District, but there's a way to analyze what geographies are available and select PUMS data that might most closely reflect the school district. Another way to gather demographic multipliers is to do local sampling, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So, PUMS data, and try to validate whether the Rutgers multipliers were the conservative multipliers or not, meaning did they estimate at a high level the number of school-aged children? We did a little bit of research, we were alerted and we examined two sources of information. New Rochelle and Portchester both have done form-based codes, this very recently. Portchester just adopted theirs, performed an environmental impact statement, and New Rochelle back in 2015 did an environmental impact statement. They both used PUMS data. And Portchester did a nice job in that they, they looked at the PUMS data and they compared it or contrasted it to the published Rutgers data. And on this slide, I'm showing in the red box, one and two-bedroom. And they make the distinction between market rate units available for rent or ownership and this information is also published by the size of the structure, size of the units, meaning a two-to-four unit apartment complex versus a larger complex. And so they use, the breakpoint they use is five units. So the numbers utilized in the Chapewa or Town of Newcastle EIS rely on the Rutgers numbers. And that's the numbers for five-plus unit market rate units or rents. And those numbers are 0.07 and 0.16 for one- and two-bedroom units. And what it, what that is, is if you had 100 dwelling units, you multiply by 100 one-bedroom dwelling units, you multiply units, you multiply by 0.07, you would generate seven students. And so if you compare what Fort Chester did in their PUMS sample for one-bedroom units, they found a lower multiplier, meaning fewer students would be generated in contrast to the Rutgers numbers. However, in the two-bedroom units, they found just a little over double the number of students. And so I'm not saying that that's the rates that might be observed here in the Chaparral School District, but it alerts us that the multipliers vary. They vary by geography, they vary by market, as I mentioned earlier. And so we don't believe that the Rutgers numbers, as used in the EIS, are conservative. They may have indeed underestimated students. The next component of the analysis is the fiscal impact analysis. It's a very brief analysis contained in the EIS, and it examines and evaluates the impact the new students might have on the school district's budget, and it takes a, utilizes a per capita approach, and assumes that the cost for one student is equal over time, and that the simple way to evaluate project costs is divide the total budget by the total pop student population, you come up with a cost per student, and then multiply that by new students, and that is how much it will cost an educated student. Similarly, it also indicates that new tax revenue will more than offset the new cost, and there's very little information to make that assessment, and so what we are suggesting, and our recommendations that I'll speak to in just a moment, is that a much more robust fiscal analysis needs to be performed, and that needs to look at hand-in-hand with the enrollment projections. Here's our recommendations. These are included in our comment letter that we've provided to the board, I know that they're going to be available to everybody. There's some critical things that need to be done in order for the analysis to be comprehensive and fully evaluated, taking a hard look at this project. One, we recommend that the town or the consultants performing the analysis utilize PUMS data specific to the school district.
I'm sorry, Chris, I'm having trouble hearing a little. Can you, are you able to speak into the microphone a little bit more? Because I'm having trouble hearing.
Yeah, I think it's because the, we can't hear anything over here. I think it's because the speakers are directed out.
Oh, I see. Okay. They can hear a little.
The, we recommend the use of PUMS data specific to the school district. We note that the analysis in the EIS assumes all rental occupied units. We don't know if that's a fair assumption, and that, you know, over a 15-year period, some of these units might be offered for sale. For-sale units do not generate tax revenue at the same rate as for rental units, and different assessment methods utilized. So we think that the analysis should look at a mix of those ownership types, and then we also recommend that the multipliers that the board utilizes be tested against real observations, if we use the word "local market observations." Second recommendation that we suggest is that the enrollment projections be updated. You know, the school district provided those estimates to the town, that those enrollment projections need to then add in the number of students that are projected in order to understand what the future enrollment rate would look like, and then important corollary to that is that a school capacity analysis needs to be done. School capacity analysis looks at physical classroom size, classes by grade, student population by grade, also looks at utilization and occupation of classrooms, and then looks at future program needs, whether the school is going to be entertaining different classrooms, different instructional techniques or programs, and you also need to look at any capital projects, maintenance, you know, perhaps there's certain facilities that need to be upgraded, and all that would go into a school capacity analysis. Going hand-in-hand with the capacity analysis, because when you look at your enrollment projections and your capacity analysis, then you can make an assessment about whether there is indeed capacity to accommodate additional students, both physically and operationally. The addition of new students, just because class sizes are, just because the population may have declined over the last several years, that doesn't necessarily mean classroom sizes are going to accommodate new students, because, you know, you've done this before, is that you might need a new, had a new class to a particular grade to accommodate a population increase. And then, last but not least, all this information goes together to look at expanded fiscal analysis on the district. You know, you would use these new school age projections and capacity analysis, and then look at, well, do physical improvements need to be made in order to accommodate new students? We know that the analysis contained in the GGS was silent on the New York tax impact implications, it was also silent on state aid projections, it just assumed state aid was a constant, it didn't change with, you know, variations in the population. We also know it didn't address any potential pilot agreements or payment of new taxes or other incentives that might be given. And so all these things need to be done together. That information was not in the EIS, and these are the things that we think should be added or amended so that you have adequate information to make a informed decision on the project. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay. Do you want to start with questions or comments for the board?
Yeah, I actually, I did have a question for you, Chris. When looking at the multipliers, the DG EIS are calling that they could use the Rutgers multiplier to estimate the number of students in the study zone, and they had estimated 18. And when that data was pulled very recently, that was last week, there was actually 97 students where the multiplier would have assumed 18. Is there, I mean, are there any conclusions you can derive from that about how the Rutgers multiplier performs here?
I'm surprised it's difficult to hear.
So, yeah, to repeat that, the baseline example of how many students were in the study area was estimated using Rutgers multipliers, estimated 18 students, and when you actually sampled and identified that population, it was a much higher, I couldn't hear the tone.
97.
97. So that does point to, you know, there might have been an error in that estimate, it might have been that the multiplier, I don't know if they looked at all the, I think what they did was a normal process, they looked at the housing style, tenure, number of bedrooms, but what it points to is that there's high variability in making these estimates, and that you do need to truth them. If that answered the question.
I think so. Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if it's typical, and if you can answer this, because I know the Form-Based Code is, I think it's a more recent way to revitalize towns, it's, you know, so there may not be as much, you know, data, but I know that you have recommendations here for things that we can do to make sure that the comments are appropriate and the final environmental impact study can be as informative as possible and accurate as possible. But are there, because I think this is a big concern of the board and a lot of community members, that, you know, as these Form-Based Codes are written, what, you know, since some of this data is always going to, it's going to be estimated in terms of the impact on the school-aged children, what kind of stopgap measures would be typical in, you know, in this code to make sure that, should the numbers be really off, because again, it's always an estimate, that we can put the brakes on or get data as it goes on so that we can be sure not to overload the school system or not to overload our transportation systems, et cetera? And what's typical to see in a code to make sure that there are these sorts of measures taken?
You know, we know, it is challenging to make estimates and look 15 years in the future.
Right, that's why, yeah.
And so I think what we would want to discuss are what kind of monitoring can we do in order to gauge how many students are actually generated as projects are built? And we've seen samples of that, where it's a cooperative reporting, building owner, you know, I don't know if you guys still do it this way, the old school was like, how do you determine how many new kids are coming next year? You send them home, you send them home a note, right, to figure out.
Right, they're supposed to say how many kids are starting kindergarten the next year, right? Exactly, right.
Right? It's kind of a similar mechanism, it's like, you want to, I think it's a collaboration with the town, the town would be tracking building permits, tracking unit types, and so you have an inventory of what's being built, and then it's some kind of feedback from building owners or survey of, you know, you collecting how many students are coming from those developments, and then building these kind of measures in the secret finding statement. The secret finding statement comes at the conclusion of the process, it documents the record, and it also builds in mitigation measures, and this kind of monitoring might be a mitigation measure that the town would entertain in order to make sure that we're not overloading the school.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, what I was going to ask is, so let's say that one of these mitigation-type measures is put into a code. Once a Form-Based Code is adopted, if, let's say for argument's sake, numbers are higher than expected, but within the Form-Based Code, are we allowed to stop development? I guess that's part of what I'm finding very confusing about this, is if those sort of targets are hit, or the reporting says that the numbers aren't what we expected the numbers to look like, would the town then be allowed to say no, even though that type of building is permitted under this Form-Based Code? Or doesn't, my thought was, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding how this works correctly, because my impression was that once you have the Form-Based Code, if you're within that code's perimeter, you're okay?
Well, as currently written, the town would, you know, this is the only secret review, the only environmental impact that's going to be performed for a downtown respective development that's been planned, and in concept, they're proposing an administrative approval process, so if products all conform to the code, they don't have to go to the planning board, they only have a site plan review, with some exception, and so therefore it is an expedited approval process. So the concern would be, like, well, how do you pump the brakes, right? So if this is going to allow to be continued, and so we may want to build something into the code as part of the mitigation exploration that might allow for that pause to occur. Some variation on that, I don't know if there's.
You know, there are, can you hear me? There are some changes that, you know, could be made to the Form-Based Code itself. Right now, for example, in its discussion of the secret process, it explicitly exempts the future development unless it is one of those new developments that would be subject to getting a special permit and not part of the administrative review. Anything that's with the administrative review, they're saying it's a type-two action. But in the final version of the Form-Based Code, they could consider changing that, and I think that's actually something that Fort Chester went through, and in their final iteration of the Form-Based Code, they do not exempt as much from secret review as the initial version. So, you know, that's something that could be looked into further, is modifying what is considered a type-two action, and something that would have, you know, the potential to be generating schoolchildren, could be considered, you know, not included in that type-two exclusion in the code.
Allison, can a interested party challenge an adopted Form-Based Code if they feel that it would have a negative impact on their interests legally after adoption?
Any party who has legal standing, so, you know, whose interests are affected, can challenge the code once it's adopted, they could maybe challenge the environmental review process that went into approving the code.
Okay, thank you.
So as a follow-up, so I just want to make sure I understand. So let's say for argument's sake, we get numbers back that for one- and two-bedroom apartments, for argument's sake, the numbers look fairly similar or reasonably similar to what's in the DG EIS, but for three-bedroom apartments, they look vastly different, just to throw out a hypothetical, I'm not saying in any way this is true. Then there could be a provision of the code that one- and two-bedroom construction projects fall within the code, but something that was building outside of one- and two-bedroom so-called project for three-bedroom apartments could be subject to a second secret process. Is that an example, like, is something like that theoretically be built into the code? Is that what you mean, Allison? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, the framework that exists in the code right now basically says that any use that does not require going to the planning board for a special permit, which is above and beyond the general ad of right uses that the Form-Based Code is going to permit, only those things that go to the planning board for more would be like a traditional special use permit review are subject to secret review. And it just says that for anything that's of ad of right development is a type-two action. So they could choose to, you know, further flesh out if it's going to be, you know, a residential development, if it's going to be fill in the blank, you know, they have the ability to decide as a town what they will consider to be a type-two action or not. So there is some flexibility there, and I think that's something to definitely note to the town board and the council. Thank you.
So, sorry, excuse me, you were there. So first thing, I think you answered my question, you said FPC is used for urban areas, and last thing, last time I looked, the town board is not an urban area, it's suburban and more rural area, but then you said that you use PUMS to analyze this, I was wondering why PUMS wasn't being used initially. But out of everything, it seems like, based on your presentation, Chris, the biggest thing that we need would be much more detailed analysis in order to understand what has to be done and what could be done, because it seems like the way it is now, as you said earlier, that data used was not sufficient, I think we need a second data point. I think that's what we might look for you to do, or something to do. As Jane and Hillary mentioned about this monitoring, I'm not sure who would be responsible in monitoring, the school district would have to look at that, and it seems it's really interesting, or it's going to affect us. And then, maybe Allison, just, once this final EIS passes, there's no turning back, right? So unless all these little provisions are put in there upfront, then we don't really have a say in them, is that correct?
So, so once the FPIS is finalized, the finding statement is adopted, and if the town chooses to proceed and adopt the Form-Based Code, then, you know, they always do have the ability to amend their code in the future, which is what they had said to this board. You know, what we have said in response is, you know, that may be coming in a little bit of a reactionary posture. So, yes, it's ideal to get all of these comments out right now, and to really give the hard look that's required by secret before this is passed at the end of the year. the hard look that's required by secret before this is passed, at the end of the day, if they pass this form-based code, and, you know, development is happening at some more rapid pace than anyone could have foreseen, you know, they have the ability to enact a moratorium, to put on the pause, and to say, okay, we need, we need to amend this, we need to figure out what we didn't account for here, and change.
At that point, we could oversee overloaded, or whatever, we don't, we don't understand, right? Somebody has the mind for this very closely.
Yes, and that, that is why, you know, Chris has recommended that as part of the finding statement, you know, mitigation measure in adopting this form-based code is this ongoing monitoring, because if you are doing monitoring, then you have a better sense of, you know, are we, are we going too fast, or are there more children coming in than the school districts?
So, that's just, that's just basically another unfunded mandate on the district to do.
Sorry?
That's just another unfunded mandate on the school district to monitor this. So, okay, that's all.
Could I ask you a question you may not be able to answer, because it's about the Portchester work? Are, are you familiar with how the secret analysis went with that, and how the school district interacted with them in Portchester, or in Rochelle?
I'm not directly, I don't know. I do know, I think it was Portchester, or the, the IDA, Industrial Development Agency, actually funded the school capacity analysis, and so they were actively involved. I mean, at its core, this is an economic development project, right? The community, the town wants to see a vibrant downtown, in order to have a vibrant downtown, need residents, and so I think that was probably the motivation for the IDA to get involved. I don't know the dynamic.
Have you seen, Allison, I think I mean for you, have you seen projects like this go into law where this school district's been involved in something so potentially significant?
Well, you know, as, as Chris has mentioned, the form-based code concept is pretty modern and novel convention, so I have not personally, you know, seen many of these get adopted, and I was adopted, and I was not involved in either Rochelle or in Portchester adopting their form-based code. I, I think generally based on my experience with, you know, many applicants who have a residential housing project, you know, certainly impact to the schools or something that are considered, and, you know, I would say ideally the school district is, is involved in providing you permission, but.
But, but in the context of a form-based code, this is still very new.
In the context of a form-based code, I do not have personal experience working with municipalities that's adopted one.
So, back to the litigation and the monitoring, if a developer buys a piece of property under the form-based code, and we're monitoring this, and we say it's moving too fast, how does the town have a moratorium on them to stop developing if they've already purchased the property, do that?
Well, that's actually not, not as big of an issue as you might think. In New York State, you, you don't have what's called a vested right in the current zoning of your property. So, you could buy, you know, a piece of property downtown and think that you're going to put in, you know, whatever the code currently permits, but the town has the power at any time to enact a moratorium and to say, no, actually, we're not going to give you a building permit right now, and we may change the zoning. So, what you thought you were going to be able to build, you're not going to be able to build it anymore. And if someone has just purchased the property, then they don't, you know, have any right to that whole zoning if the town decides to change it and adopt something that, that doesn't let them do what they thought they weren't going to do.
Wouldn't they litigate?
They, they may, it's possible.
If I paid a couple million dollars for a piece of property, then the town says, by the way, we're not going to let you do what you thought you were going to do, now I've got a couple million dollars tied up in something I can't use.
I mean, it, it happens, it certainly can lead to litigation, but the, you know, generally the cases that are stronger for someone who's bought that property to win are, are where they've actually started redeveloping, they've expended millions of dollars, they're, you know, they built two out of their three stories, and then the town tries to pull their building permit in order to say, no, you can't actually finish this out and use it for the use that you intended to. So, it, it's called expending substantial costs and having substantial construction done. And so that's when that developer would get what's called a vested right, and where their circumstances change a little bit legally. But someone who just buys a piece of property and hasn't spent that money and hasn't started redeveloping, hasn't pulled the building permit, they don't just automatically get the right to always use that property for how it's zoned when they bought it.
But if they did litigate, would it be up to the town, either to litigate or settle, correct?
Um, yeah, they, I mean, if it was the town that was putting the moratorium in place and changing the zoning, they would, they would see the town board.
And then the town board would say, well, we don't want to, we don't want to cover the cost of litigation, so it'll be built, or whatever.
I really can't say what they would do.
Okay, thank you.
So, you've talked about the form-based code being relatively new, and you've shown us examples from Rochelle and Portchester, is that because you were unable to find examples of form-based code enactment elsewhere in Westchester?
No, we didn't do an inventory of that, we, we've seen form-based code used throughout New York, and I mean, I think most permanently used for like planning communities, and it's evolved into an urban redevelopment tool.
So, you said urban, have you seen the form-based code used in areas such as ours, which is obviously not an urban environment?
Yes, yeah, I think it's been used in a pretty diverse set of environments.
Okay, and I'm just curious about how that compares to, to other towns that have revitalized that were not seen to be very vital, such as Pleasantville, or Armonk, or Katona, where the revitalization there took place without a form-based code?
I'm not familiar with all those.
Right.
Communities or circumstances, I can't really speak to that. I mean, it's not the only way, you know, that's the question.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, form-based code is not the only way to revitalize a town or a small hamlet. I mean, in your experience, and maybe this is not a question going to your expertise, but in your experience, are there ways that are just as effective and perhaps more effective in revitalizing a downtown hamlet, such as Chappaqua?
I didn't hear the whole question.
Um, in your, in your experience, do you think that there are ways, other than the enactment of a form-based code, if there are ways, other than that, that would be effective for revitalizing a downtown area, such as Chappaqua, the Chappaqua hamlet?
I'm sure there's, there's other tools and techniques that, I think, you know, I can't speak to the specific circumstances and how the community arrived at this tool, and, you know, you know, that's, you know, I can't offer you.
Right, okay.
I would be reaching down, but I.
I understand, that's okay. Also, the DGEIS assumes that about 65% of the units would be one-bedroom units, and obviously, you know, 35% would be two- and three-bedrooms, and they don't provide, it doesn't provide supporting evidence for that. Do you have an opinion on that assumption?
No, I, I don't. You know, I think that you, when you do these kind of analyses, you establish some baseline, some, some assumptions. You know, I, you know, along those same lines, I don't know, it's on the order of $20,000 worth of retail commercial space compared to 1,000 apartment units, is that the right mix? I, I don't have an answer for that, but I know, to be very frank, the consultants that have developed the form-based code are practitioners with a long history in developing form-based codes, and I believe that they bring the, the knowledge to develop a code that's appropriate, but that's, I write that through a planning process, which means you gain the process, but can't speak specifically to those two developers.
Right, and I suppose that would speak to, to the community. So, for instance, we've seen apartments at 91 Bedford that are advertised as one-bedroom apartments, but yet they have dens that essentially function as one-bedrooms, a closet. So, I would guess that the number of bedrooms a developer decides to, to include in a unit is very much geared towards the market that they see in a particular town, the market for one, two, or three bedrooms. So, if people want to come here with their children, then it may be likely that the, that sort of generic estimate would be revised to, you know, to account for the differences in, in the specific market. Would that make sense? If people are coming to Chappaqua for the schools.
I think, when, when you're doing it inherently, a departmental fact statement, inherently, you lack some detail, and I think it would be good to have dialogue about what that unit, unit mix is, and like, why just one- and two-bedrooms, why not three-bedrooms? You know, what is, what is the market asking for? I think we talked, it's in our correspondence, that the market analysis is not a true market analysis, robust market analysis, it just demonstrates that there's demand for apartments, it doesn't speak to demand for one-bedroom versus demand for two-bedroom. That kind of information might be available sometimes, you know, it becomes, the further out you look, the more speculative it becomes, too, so it's easier, or less confident in that kind of information.
Right, right. At one point, does logic get added to an analysis such as this? I'm having a hard time logically understanding how roughly 1,000 units would equate to such a small number of students, given our location. I'm having a hard time rattling with the fact that this, these new residences would appeal to families without children, or younger adults, when they could move closer to the city and have less commute, if that's one of the target areas, or that, you know, a retired citizen would choose Chappaqua to live in our community. I just, I do believe there's probably some retired citizens that would choose to live there, and there would be some younger adults who would choose to live there, but I would think that logically, the majority of people who would choose to live in these spaces would be people who would want to bring their students to our schools. And I understand that maybe that's not a calculator, but at one point, do you insert logic into a report like this?
I, I think, you know, the public comment process allows for these different points of view to be articulated. You know, I think what we're talking about tonight is that we have some concern about the school children generation rates that are being used. We did mention, as part of our presentation, that it's, it's difficult to quantify, but it's a known factor that attractive school districts attract families, and so there's a propensity for folks who might have a choice between school district living in District A versus District B, they would choose District B, and I think that's what we're talking about here, is that Chappaqua has a reputation that's attracted to young families. Having said that, you know, the occupancy and the number of students is, is controlled by the number of factors, so it does go back to that, right? At one point, I don't know if I've answered, answered everything, you know.
I'm just having a hard time figuring out a pathway to move forward without some kind of mechanism to allow logic to exist that would, I don't want to say protect this community, because that's not really what it is, but we certainly can't absorb a large amount of students coming in all at once because the facility is opened up, and if that happens over time repeatedly, that will have an impact on our school community. So, what kind of safeguards can be put in place so that we can move forward in a way that's logical? Because right now, to me, I'm having a hard time with the way that this is practiced based on what I anticipate would happen based on logic, not necessarily based on analysis. And that's where I'm having a really hard time reconciling what's happening right now.
I think we, we mentioned earlier, and I don't want to disanswer your question, but there might be practical approaches in order to, I'll use the word phasing, like hey, you know, we're not ready for pathology units, let's do this in phases, you know, let's allot something to occur, and build in a monitoring program to do that, that might be an approach to, to address that.
I don't see that, my, I don't see that right now.
No, it's not, it's not that right now. I think, I think our first goal is to get comfortable with the projections and the analysis, and then if they're still concerned about what those impacts might be, what are the appropriate measures to mitigate those, those impacts?
Does anyone have any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the administration besides Christine?
No.
Okay, so, at this point, I will open it up to public comments for, for Christopher Round on this particular issue, and we'll use the public, we'll have a public comment on this issue, much the same as our regular public comment period, you know, three minutes per person. So, if anyone would like to speak to this issue, please come up to the microphone. Okay. So, we have no public comments at this time. So, I would say that regarding our next steps, we will submit the letter submitted by, given to us by chasing companies to the town as part of our public, part of our comment to their public hearing. We'll post our letter on the website, and the board will schedule a work session, probably for sometime next week, to, to discuss next steps.
Sounds good.
That make sense to everyone?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, as well.
Okay, so I would like to thank both Chris and Allison for coming today and presenting to us and doing a really thorough job in the very short time that you had, and I recognize that, that this was, you know, not a lot of time to, to analyze this, but we will be back in touch with you to discuss where, how we move forward.
We'll do our best, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Just want to give Ralph and Chris a moment to just hop off the stage.
Oh, okay.
Danny, you want to show them the back door?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so we have a, a couple of announcements in the superintendent's report today, and the first is for an appointment on our agenda, so I'd like to ask Tony to introduce to the Board of Education, our new Director of Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness. So, Tony and Ellen co-chair the process, and Tony will describe Philip to the Board of Education and the community.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you to the Board of Education for approving the creation of this position back in August, as we have been talking about that possibility for months. So, we are excited to welcome aboard our first-ever Director of Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness here at Chappaqua, his name is Philip Marcus. Philip is currently an assistant principal in the New York City Department of Education. He works in the Bronx, he's in a middle school. He supervises approximately 30 teachers across the communities. Prior to being an assistant principal in the city, Philip worked as literacy coach. He's also an adjunct professor at Hunter College and instructs future teachers in literacy specifically. Prior to being literacy coach, he was also an English teacher, both at the high school level and the middle school level. Philip went through a pretty rigorous. Philip went through a pretty rigorous process. It included a screening interview, a small committee interview with our district leadership team, in addition to a larger committee interview with the cross-section of stakeholders from our community. He also engaged in a writing task and facilitated a learning experience with the students in our BSU. Throughout the process, he was consistent, he was clear, he was passionate, he rose to the top of every step. It is clear that this work of equity, anti-racism, social justice, and cultural competency is centered in everything that he does. He speaks it, he lives it, he breathes it. There's an authenticity that he brings to the work that we are excited about. And those experiences that we have with him through the process were reiterated and confirmed with the references that we checked. So we are excited to welcome Philip aboard. He'll be able to join us after Thanksgiving and see transitions out of his current position with your approval of the recommendation. And we are looking forward to the work that we're going to be able to embark upon with him as a member of our leadership team.
Thank you, Tony. So at every meeting, I've been providing a schedule update for the community. So we are at full capacity at the elementary school and the middle school. And our high school is at 50% in the morning. And then the second, 50% have access to physical instruction on campus in the afternoon. Some of the areas that we're talking about, that I'll be presenting to the Board of Education on November 18th, our next meeting, which may result in some adjustments to our practices, involve leveraging our teachers who are remote to help support core instruction for our K-1 students who have committed to be remote for a variety of issues, reasons. Part of our thinking is that we can provide direct instruction in a different way to our remote students that may be more effective. We need to do more analysis and research around this particularly, but just based on the feedback we're receiving from our administrative team and our faculty, we are looking into this as a possible option moving forward, which would require a longer commitment for our remote students in K-1 that would expand beyond the weekly commitment that we're asking for our K-1 families right now. In the middle school, we are looking at a slight adjustment to the dismissal schedule so that students would be able to travel home and then have access to extra help and clubs and activities remotely. And we also would be able to provide extra collaboration time if we move our schedule in this way for our faculty. So Adam is leading conversations with our two middle school teams around potentially making a shift to our schedule. And he's also working with them to redefine and reshape what Wednesday morning will look like. And then he really is in discussions right now to determine whether or not they want to place some more parameters and expectations around remote instruction. So those are potential areas that we're looking at right now. I'll be coming back to you in November with some decisions and recommendations for your consideration. But we have, we have some more work we need to do before we arrive at a place where we feel comfortable moving forward. There's a lot of hesitation to making any adjustments to our schedule based on our process. However, we do need to take into account what we're learning and make some decisions about how we can integrate and be better for our kids. And that's where we are right now in that discussion phase. I also wanted to share that we received information that offseason athletic workouts can begin on November 2nd, next week. This is important to a big cadre of the community. But I don't have language around what that's supposed to look like inside. So as of right now, all of this will occur outside. But I'm optimistic that in the near future, I'll receive some parameters around what indoor varsity and JV athletics should look like moving forward. But right now, I don't have that information. So we're going to try to have all offseason workouts occur outside.
Christine?
Yeah?
Before you move off of your schedule, yeah, I wonder if you had approved the half-days through November. Do you have an expectation that you're going to want to continue that?
Right, so we have been talking about that as an administrative team. Our, our plan is to present to you a recommendation at our next meeting. But before we recommend moving forward with continuing half-days, we need to make sure that the AM portion of that schedule is adjusted based on some feedback that we're receiving. So I anticipate, I anticipate at the November meeting, presenting you a calendar adjustment that we continue those half-days. But we have some work to do before, I make that final recommendation to you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Tony, can you just do a brief update on staffing? I think it's important we just continue to update the community on where we are.
Yeah, sure, Christine. There really are only two changes here, three changes, sorry, minor changes. One is that we did, you will also be accepting a recommendation for a letter of resignation for the purposes of retiring tonight from an elementary teacher at an old school. So that's added on there. You'll see number seven. It says elementary unbilled. That's, the person is not officially retired yet. We haven't officially begun that process, but that is our recommendation on tonight's agenda. Additionally, our FFCRA childcare leads, you'll notice one difference. Last month, we were at five people being out. Now we're at four, one of our teachers returned from her leave. And our workplace accommodations for staff working remotely, we have one additional member working remotely based on their request for a workplace accommodation and documentation they provided.
Thank you, Tony. Then Adam, would you like to take us through some technology updates, curricular updates?
Thank you. You'll see on your agenda, item 5.3 is an agreement that was made through Erie One Voces and Google to make sure that Google is ED Law 2D compliant. So you'll remember that ED Law 2D is all about student records and the privacy of those records. So that just ensures that Google maintains a certain standard with regard to student privacy. So that's a positive thing, is we use Google not only for our learning management system with Google Classroom K4, but we also use the other Google apps for education pretty extensively. So that covers Google Docs, Sheets, Slides, Forms, and those other applications that we use. So that is item 5.3. And then item 5.5 is a contract. We actually have an existing contract with this company. This is a company that services businesses and school districts around cybersecurity and cyber threats. And so this is, really comes in two parts. One of them is for $7,500 is, they conduct a readiness assessment for us to determine any vulnerabilities that we might have and also the procedures around how we would respond to a cyber attack or some kind of cyber threat. And then the other part of it is $10,000 for a response retainer to the extent that we were ever victims of a cyber attack, that they would be on standby and ready to be deployed. So we wouldn't need to take board action at a moment's notice should that happen here in the district. So we continue to be as vigilant as we can to work with experts inside and outside with our tech team and others to make sure that we are not vulnerable. But it's very apparent, and just reading the news, that school districts do fall victim to cyber attacks periodically. And so we want to position ourselves so we're ready to the extent that this might happen to us. So those are those two. And then, as Jane mentioned earlier today, we've got three grants from the CSF that we're really excited about. The first two come from Greeley, and they're both around equity and anti-racism work. The first one is 5.8. Sheila Jacobs, who teaches AP Government, wrote a grant. So all of our AP Gov students will have a copy of The Color of Law. We have enough copies for everyone taking that class. And The Color of Law is really all about the forgotten, the subtitle is "The Forgotten History of How Our Governments Segregated America." So that fits really well into a piece of the work that they do in that course. And then 5.9 is enough copies of Stamped for our American History courses. And that was written by Tom Whitmer and Jacqueline Zunora. So you'll also see changing gears just a little bit. 5.10 is a STEAM drone grant. So this is funds to support the purchase of drones and also supporting things like batteries and chargers and whatnot for both of our middle schools. That was written by Tabitha Sasso, who's our middle school team teacher. Her counterpart, STEAM teacher, excuse me, her counterpart is Jenny Girus over at Seven Bridges, so they work together. I'll make sure they institute this. Drone science is really a very growing, it's a growing field out there in terms of how drones are used, really all over the world. And it was interesting, we were doing a little bit of research on how some schools are using drones. And one student won an award from another school district, won an award for the use of drones in a greenhouse. So I thought that was pretty interesting. They were monitoring the climate in a greenhouse using a drone. So I thought that was interesting and connected to some of our slides that you'll see in just a little bit. So I just wanted to touch on, our superintendent conference day is on November 3rd, which is also election day. At the elementary level, we have parent-teacher conferences scheduled for most of the day. But we do have Dolly Chu, who's coming. She wrote the book, The Person You Mean to Be. And she's going to come to do a fireside chat and do some professional development around implicit bias. And that's going to be a required session for all of our staff members, not just our faculty, but also our administrative assistants and other support staff, of teaching assistants, et cetera, will participate in that kind of fireside chat professional development. And we have some students and faculty that are also going to be part of that. So that'll be exciting for us. Dr. Ackerman is going to launch that, take that off earlier in the morning. Then we'll have a little break, and you can see the rest of the agenda. We have some themes that run through the agenda. One of them is obviously social justice with Dolly's support. And we also have Dr. and Dr. Franklin and Brenda Campbell Jones coming. And they're going to do some work with our clinicians and counselors in the morning. They're going to do some work with our secondary English department in the afternoon. So we'll continue our relationship with them. And then we also have quite a bit of departmental work, curriculum work, curriculum alignment work, things like that. We also have some technology integration sessions in the afternoon. And we've got a special session organized by our special education and PBS staff, which Ellen is going to talk about in just a minute. The last thing I want to mention is we have a required session for all of our secondary faculty about civil discourse around the election. So we'll have a required session for all of our faculty around that. And Dr. Ackerman and Mary DeBain, who's one of our professional developers, who's a former high school social studies department chair and teacher here at Greeley for quite some time. Now she's on the professional development team. So Dr. Ackerman and Mary DeBain are going to team up to co-teach that, which I think is going to be very exciting in a lot of time.
Ellen? So this is 5.7. We've asked PCG to provide professional development for our secondary special education teachers and teaching assistants with a real focus on remote learning. We expect this to be a collaborative learning experience that just really will add some tools to the toolbox for our special educators as they meet the unique challenges associated with supporting students with learning differences and disabilities in a remote or a hybrid learning environment. Thank you, Ellen. So I also wanted to mention on the agenda tonight, the board has worked their way through the RFP process to identify a realtor to replace the owner property back on the market. So William Rebus was the realtor selected and will be under the consent agenda for your approval tonight. I also wanted to mention that we are in the process of designing our Sustainability Research Center. And in order to move forward with the approval process from State Ed to your beginning our SECRE analysis of that location, so that resolution is on the agenda tonight as well. And I wanted to conclude by just sharing with you some thoughts regarding the solar project. So as you know, we engaged in an RFP process last spring to identify a potential solar project for the district. And we granted the RFP to Brightcore. And we've been going through our SECRE analysis. And we've encountered complications, particularly related to this site, site identified for ground mounts. So what I am going to suggest we consider is halting our SECRE process as well as holding off on moving forward with potential groups and carports until after we move through the pandemic. I think due to the unanticipated issues that were presented during the SECRE process and our inability to really engage our community in the process in the way we normally would due to our meeting limitations and the sheer scope of the process, of project, which is pretty significant, I feel like we need to consider pausing and regrouping once we can transition back to somewhat of a normal working environment. And I'd like to send a letter to this effect, to Brightcore, on behalf of the school district, if the board is minimal to moving forward in this way. I think it's very important we consider leveraging solar energy as a part of our sustainability initiatives, but also as a way to generate revenue for the district. But I just don't feel the timing is right due to the complications we're now experiencing as we are engaging in the SECRE process in terms of the ground mount analysis. Very complicated, almost overly complicated in an already complicated environment that we're working within. Yeah, I appreciate your bringing this up, Christine. And I would agree, because I think that there are some significant environmental impacts to the solar project. And it's something that we want community engagement on, which is very difficult at this time. We are experiencing this pandemic, and I just feel that people don't have the bandwidth to take in any more information at this time. So, you know, in the interests of getting a feel for our community and what they would like, I would say that we put this on pause. I'm going to agree with your recommendation.
I agree. I will say, I think it's unfortunate. I mean, everything about this pandemic is unfortunate, not to be quick about it. I, it's a project I was excited about, and it's a project that I'm hopeful we can revisit at a later time when the world is different. But I agree with what Dr. Ackerman said, that this is, even in its most basic holdback form, anything we did on this project at this point would result in changes to our buildings and changes to our community. And I think that, given that we're not in a place right now where we can invite the public en masse to come to a meeting and talk to us about those proposed changes, I don't think the timing's right. And I look forward to hopefully being able to revisit this project, which is something that I think has a lot of potential merit for the district when we're in a place where we can have the kind of community engagement that we'd want to have on it.
I agree, and I don't have anything to add.
Yep, did I, I think very much what Hillary just said. I think that there's a lot of value in these projects and moving forward with sustainability and us getting educated and educating the community on that as well. I think we all want to move in that direction. And we look forward to a time when we can do that in a very thorough and straightforward way.
I think from a boardroom view, we've done a lot of work on this. We took a field trip. We saw the roof mounts at Fordham. We saw the ground mounts over, let's say, in Prithswee, or somewhere over in that area, in Armunk. Right? The ground mounts. We saw, we saw carports down in Hadfield College. We've both done, worked on this, Holly and I, we've worked on this probably since a year ago, August. I think it's a project that the district should take on. I think it's, I think we can do a lot for the district from a green point of view. However, at this point, I think I agree with you, Christine, that we need to slow down, pause on this. The only part of this project I would consider moving forward would be the carports. Because that doesn't, there's a secret involved in it. It's not as extensive. It's actually a very small part. It's only part of like the Greeley parking lot. The faculty and the senior parking lot. But I'm not sure if that's really the economics of that work.
Well, you know what? I also think that would be one of the more significant aesthetic changes. And I really don't know that, even if we could peel that off, I don't think we can engage with the community adequately.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. That would be the only part I would want, if we could do something, we'd move forward. Because I think it's, it's less invasive to everything. I mean, the ground mounts are big and widespread. They're on every campus. The roof mounts, we'd have to do, we have to ensure the roofs work. We're starting up the whole one. And that would be an expense on us. And as we said earlier, we've got extra expenses with COVID and pandemic elements that we hadn't thought of. So therefore, unfortunately, with the amount of work we've put into this, So therefore, unfortunately, with the amount of work we put into this, I would want to say let's burn our boys and hopefully we can pick it up in months, whatever, whenever we can do it again. Thank you for the recommendation.
I do want to reiterate, we are dealing with unanticipated challenges in the secret process. And that's really what's driving this recommendation tonight. And our inability to quickly resolve those unanticipated challenges.
No, it's another big project for the administration. We're working on keeping schools open. We're working on, Philadelphia Bond Project, we're working on the environmental plan. We're working on the FPC now. We've got a lot of things going on as well as normal day activities. So I agree and I think that was a great recommendation by you, Christine.
So I'll work on a letter and send it tomorrow. Okay, thank you, Christine.
Can I ask one question going back?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Adam, when you talked about the grants with that one, the drone, this is, I just wanted to make sure it sounds like an amazing grant for an amazing project. But when we give our kids, middle school students, technology like this with the drone, I assume that there's some sort of, this is how you use this and we're not going to get calls from the neighbors.
I have a super imagination, yes.
Yeah, it's a good question. There's actually quite a few regulations that regulate the use of drones. So obviously we'll make sure we're in compliance and we'll make sure the students are safe when they operate them. But it's, you know, it could be a really nice activity, especially now with the times that we'd like our students to spend outside and socially distanced and finding activities where they can engage in things like that. We have some neighboring school districts that we've partnered with and have some ideas about whether to work with them. Some of them have been flying drones even for a couple of years. So this is one of those projects that we're not necessarily on the front edge of this and we can learn a lot from other school districts that are using them, in some cases inside and other cases outside. So yeah, I think it's something that we can do very safely. And there are lots of pieces to it in terms of a STEAM project. There's like the computer science, coding of the drones and programming of the drones. But there's also the building and the flying and, you know, other parts to it, to all operations. So yeah, we're excited to kind of unlock the potential. But yeah, certainly safety will be at the top priority and compliance with all the regulations that are out there because they are much more highly regulated than they had been in the past now.
Thank you. So the last thing I want to share is that I'm going to send a voice call out on Thursday. I only usually do this around, you know, closing and delays, but I'm very concerned about this weekend because I know traditionally we've had a lot of events that aren't school district related, associated with Halloween. And if you look at what's happening around us in other districts, off-campus behavior has been linked to impacting whether or not schools have been able to continue to be open for onsite instruction. So I'm going to be encouraging our community, particularly our parents, to speak with their children about ensuring that they are practicing social distancing, wearing masks, and making good decisions over the course of this weekend, which I know has traditionally been one of fun and deep celebration because the outcomes could be one where unintentionally we have an exposure which could impact an entire building or multiple buildings that people may not be thinking about in the moment because they're just excited to be together on Halloween. So we'll be sending out a message to that, of that nature tomorrow night to our families so they can speak with their children because I think it's really important. This will be our first moment where we may have, moment where families and children may be faced with making decisions. The second one will likely be around Thanksgiving holiday. So I think for the first holiday that we see traditionally behavior like this, I'd like to send out a message to let people know how serious the situation is. Not that people aren't thinking about it in that light, but I'd like to provide a gentle reminder as the person who is basically the COVID coordinator and public health commissioner for this community. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Are there any committee reports today?
Oh, I have one for facilities.
Yeah.
The first facilities committee meeting is going to be tomorrow morning. And that is the, not the advisory committee, but the small facilities committee.
And we are trying to set up a meeting for the advisory communications committee, which we're hoping to be sometime in early, early November, but we're trying to finalize that.
Yes, we have a bunch of upcoming meetings. I know people have been notified some more new advisory committees. So I think there's a bunch of upcoming meetings. We'll probably have something to report on next time.
Right. I have nothing to report on today. Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment period. We walk the public comments. And in respect of each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Of course, you can contact board members by email or phone. And after the public comment period has been completed, the board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding the comments presented as it's not a Q and A period. So please go ahead and state your name.
Good evening. I'm Haley Ferraro, 27 Gary Jarvan-Chapala. I want to address item 5.4 on tonight's agenda, approving an agreement with William Reavis New York LLC for real estate brokerage services as a result of an RFP for the sale of his Zoner property. You have told us over the years that the sale of this property is because the district will never need to build an additional school. Therefore, it is your fiduciary responsibility to sell it. However, in light of the issues with the town precinct's proposed Form 8 code and your valid concerns about the estimate of how many additional school children it could bring to the district, I am respectfully asking you to postpone the vote on item 5.4 and do not put the property up for sale until you have a better estimate of how the district population will change in the future. In addition to the development the Form 8 code could bring, the influx of new families since the pandemic began, and the additional development in Harold, including Hunt's Place, 91 Bedford Road, the townhouse is a chap car crossing, and your own plans to sell the Zoner property to a developer will all bring additional students into the district in perhaps unforeseen numbers since the last time you made those estimates. At the October 14th board meeting, each member wrote a statement outlining the many concerns with the Form 8 code, but the estimates of the number of students was the business concern. Hillary Grass has stated that this could bring a substantial number of new students into the district and quote, "We may actually need additional school buildings," unquote. If there is even the slightest chance that you may need this property in the future for new building, it is no longer your fiduciary responsibility to sell it. In fact, it would be irresponsible to do so. Please, knowing you are asking the town to do with the Form 8 code, that you step back, reevaluate, and delay the sale of this property until you have more accurate information needing to make this decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing that there's no one else, we will move on. But before we move on to the next item, I would like to discuss what has just been said. I just want to explore a little bit the issue of whether we can, we could build another school in that area on that property. I seem to recall a discussion about that and the difficulty, because I think the point is well taken. And I do think it's something to think about.
John, do you want to respond to that, about the original purpose for purchasing that lot and why we're selling it now? Or is this holding out to it and the anticipation of potentially building another building?
I mean, just to cut to the chase, was there an issue of our inability to build a school on that property? Was that a problem?
No. When that piece of property was purchased in the early 70s, 1970s.
John, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I think it's that mic, John, you might have to use that one's mic. Is it better?
Yeah, go ahead. Just talk right.
When that piece of property was purchased in the early 70s, 1970s, the intent was at that time to build a fourth elementary school. And because at that time, the elementary school was K through six and with the growing population, they thought that they probably would need that school. But eventually, you know, the school was reorganized and eventually it was found that a middle school was needed. So when we realized that we needed another middle school, this was in the late 90s. And so they were looking at that piece of property and the current Seven Bridges property. And in the end, it was determined that the Zoner property was really not going to be a school because it was difficult to get back. It's in the back of some residential buildings. And also that place was too not lovely enough and also too small. And so Seven Bridges was the more desirable place to move to build another school. And so that piece of property was set vacant. And around 2010, our then board took a tour of all of our properties and determined that was, that building was, that lot was really not what we needed for future use. So that was a time that was determined to sell sometime. So as far as, I'm not sure what another question is, do we need a left spot to build a building or these six lots would generate too many students? First of all, this is just six lots. So you know, we can, as how many students would be without that?
I think the main, well, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. In my mind, the main point is that with the Form 8 code going forward with any iteration, however many stories, whatever it is, we will have increased enrollment. And so the question is whether we would need property in the future to build another school.
That piece of property, you know, I think all of you have walked that property, is really not an ideal space for school. So the way I see it is that if we ever get to the point that we need additional space, we need to build additional space, I think it's going to be built in addition to our current schools, either go up or go to the side.
Right. So you're saying that that is not an ideal location for a school?
Because it's far cheaper to build it that way because you already have all the existing fields, auditorium, everything is there already. And you just have to build additional spaces. That's usually how our school expands. Because when you have developed an entire property, it's very expensive. You remember when we built Seven Bridges in 2002? It was about $36 million.
Right. All right, so would we be much more physically responsible to add to the current facilities than to build a completely new one?
For example, around 2002, we also added another wing and growing room. That's the way to go. If we need more classrooms, we can either build up or we build further up at the existing six buildings.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to approvals and ratifications. So we have a motion to approve items 3.1 and 3.2. These two motions to accept, items 3.1 and 3.2, the minutes of October 14 and the minutes of October 19.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented. I will move item 4.1 instructional as presented. May I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented. I will move item 4.2 non-instructional as presented. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now we will start from consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any particular piece of business from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? No? Okay. So may I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I know we've discussed some of the items. Jane has talked about CSF and Christine's gone through on her president's report. I would just like to, once again, thank the Chapala School Foundation for their generous donations to our anti-racism efforts and for the STEAM drone project. And let's see. Yeah, anyone, any further discussion on these items? No? Okay, so all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anything else on facilities?
Nope.
Okay, so item seven, financials. May I have a motion on items 7.1 and 7.2 to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's report for September 2020 and to acknowledge receipt of the quarterly extra classroom activities account report for September 2020? Any second question?
I'll second.
All in favor, any questions or discussions on the financials? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Notice of future meetings. I will note that we did discuss the possibility of having a work session next week to discuss next steps on the Form 8 code issue, but we don't have a date yet. So there is that. And following that would be our Wednesday, November 18 meeting at 7:30 PM here at the Horace Bailey Auditorium, followed by the Wednesday, December 9, 2020 meeting at 7:30 PM at the Horace Bailey High School Auditorium. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn at 9:33 PM.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.